It's thirteen eleven, we'll call this meeting over.
I make a motion to approve the agenda by phone? Okay, that's fine.
A few seconds. For our sake. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, okay.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do.
Okay. I'll be back in a week if you don't mind. Okay. All right. Now, we need an approval of the minutes for the November second, two thousand twenty-two regular board meeting. Oh, yeah, yeah.
We've got, uh...
Couple of things we need to add. We've got three items we need to add.
Uh, need to add the Rasslin' Donation Number Nine. Under New Business. And the Source Water Residency and Response Plan. That's number ten. That's all I've got.
Yeah.
Also, Brian, we need to add, um, that we can make some kind of a policy or something about the maintenance men having to go read the water meters and, uh, the customers' dolls are loose and they try to buy them.
Okay.
But they, they express that concern and we need to look into something to kinda make sure that the customers know they need to keep their dolls, you know, away from the, uh, maintenance men.
Okay, we'll discuss that item number eleven.
Okay, thank you.
Did you put up a motion?
Uh, I was gonna do amend the agenda. Uh, approve the agenda, amended agenda. Yeah, I made a motion too.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Okay. All right there. Okay. All right. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for the November second, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting.
We'll have to come back to that. Because I can say that.
Oh, that's wrong.
We'll have to come back to the minutes. The... I wasn't present, so I can't say it.
Oh, okay.
Or make a motion.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, at this time, I'll open the floor to public comment, man.
I'd like to, uh... Oh, I'm sorry, somebody else wants to speak? I just wanted to say something about the Old Town Hall. I don't know if this is the proper place. I don't wanna step out of line.
Well, it's on the agenda.
Okay, well, last time, I think I tried to speak when it was on the agenda and I got chastised for that. And I don't wanna...
No, you're... It's on the agenda, so...
Okay. Okay.
Anybody else for public comment?
All right.
Motion to close? Public comment?
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to old business. Uh, we have Pam Schaefer here from United Community Bank. Miss Schaefer, you have the floor.
All right, I appreciate it. I'm gonna leave my phone right here, if that's okay? I've got, um, our payroll representative on the phone. Um, so, I appreciate y'all letting me come. I wanted to, um, first of all, thank you guys for your business. We appreciate the business that you do with United Community Bank. But, um, I had talked to Sherry, um, a couple of months ago, I guess it was, it was in October, uh, to make sure that you guys were aware of some of the services that we have that you might not have known about and that might be beneficial. And one of those was payroll services. Um, and we partner, uh, I thought with the changes in personnel and all that it might be a good time to... And it's right at the end of the year, it might be a good time to take a look at that and see if it might be something that you guys are interested in us helping you with. Um, but United partners with a company called Heartland Payroll, uh, and they're the experts in payroll. So, and I have on the phone, make sure he's there, Rod, are you there?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay. Rod Noonan is on the phone. He's with Heartland Payroll and he is our payroll expert. Um, he, um, is our representative with Heartland. But I'm gonna give you guys a copy of the proposal that he did for us back in October. You've already got it, so... I don't know how many examples you need.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, all right. Um, but, um, basically, when, in talking to Sherry, it looks like you guys have approximately fourteen employees and you pay weekly. Um, but what Heartland does is they take that responsibility and that burden off of the office staff and put it on to somebody who knows all about payroll, um, and, um, takes that liability away as well. But basically, for us to handle the payroll for you guys, um, based on fourteen employees per week with total fifty-eight dollars per pay period, um, that's probably, um, comparable to what you'd pay somebody on staff to do it and you're getting somebody taking that responsibility off of somebody else. So, um, I'll let Rod explain kinda how that process works, um, because I know he knows more about that than, than I would. So, Rod, I'll turn the floor over to you, if that's okay?
Sure, appreciate it, Pam. I appreciate you all having us on and, uh, yes, I can answer any question as far as how payroll works, but I can kinda go through, like, the standard, uh, services and then maybe I'll throw in some questions for you guys. Uh, so we have three levels to our payroll platform. We have our standard payroll and we have payroll plus electronic onboarding and we have payroll plus HR, which includes all of the above. Some of our ancillary services include timekeeping as well. Uh, and then, like, uh, Heartland, we have hiring, so people are trying to figure out ways to post jobs. Uh, we can help with the hiring as well. Uh, we can also help assist with work opportunity tax credits if you hire employees that are qualified, which are veterans, uh, someone in low-income areas, someone on, uh, food stamp or someone that, uh, has been unemployed for over twenty-seven weeks. Uh, so those are some of the things that we can assist with. That counted back to our standard platform, that's what most of our clients are on. And that means we handle all the tax deposits, all the quarterly filings, annual filings, W-2s. Uh, for the employees, we offer direct deposit. Uh, and then we have a mobile app in which they get their checks filled in, W-2s online. And then whoever the administrators are at, at the office will have access to the dashboard, being able to submit payroll or review payroll prior to submitting and then access to all the payroll reports, uh, that we process with the payroll. Uh, that's, again, our standard. Uh, on top of that would be onboarding. So if you have turnover and you, instead of manually putting an employee in the system and manually doing the W-four, I-nine, things like that, uh, the electronic onboarding, you can send a link to the new employee. They onboard themselves via the, uh, link. Uh, you can have custom forms out there that apply to Robbinsville in which they may have to fill out, that could be added to the template. And then at the end of that, once they go through the onboarding, where they upload their two forms of identification for the I-nine, wherever the administrator is will acknowledge that, be electronic signature, and then it uploads the employee to the system. So now those documents are electronic instead of paper. Uh, so that's the advantage of having onboarding. And then the third tier, which is, you know, and the proposal I sent was for our standard, by the way, but for the third tier, uh, HR, that's where you have the pay standard payroll plus onboarding plus HR, which you have access to being able to speak or chat with a, one of our certified HR specialists for, you know, compliance-type items, policy manual items, documents, procedures, things like that. So, I know that's kind of a quick overview, uh, but that's, those are the three tiers to our payroll. Uh, again, the standard is what most of my clients are, are set up on and, uh, which works very well. It's very user-friendly, it's, uh, web-based, there's no, you know, installing those software. It's all web-based, you can access it as you know, when you have, uh, access to the internet. Uh, and then if you have employees that clock in and out and you need assistance with that, we do a web-based timekeeping system as well that is directly linked with our payroll. Uh, again, you can, the administrators can see the dashboard, who's clocked in, who's clocked out, where they're clocked in and out if you have remote employees. Uh, and then at the end of the pay period, it's just as simple as pushing a button that says send a payroll and it populates the hours into the pay grid so you can process and release the payroll. Uh, any questions on that? Like I said, I know I went through that pretty quick, but that's, uh, more than overview of what we do.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, as you know, we get, they get paid weekly. What would be the turnaround time if we chose you do this? Because they get paid every week, would that delay their payroll?
Gotcha. So we, for direct deposit on a week, on a Friday, check, you get a Friday check day, we want to process it forty-eight hours prior to check day. So we have to see by four o'clock.
Do you hold your workers back a, a week anyway? You're paying them this Friday for last week?
We pay like on Wednesdays and we have them in and you know, you say this is...
It's for the previous ones? So if they pay on Wednesday for the prior week, Rod, they would probably submit that Monday?
On Monday?
Okay.
Yes, yes. So I have a lot of customers that do check days on Wednesdays and that's what they do, they process on Monday.
Okay.
And if for some reason if you got behind or something had to process on Tuesday, we can do same day, or excuse me, one day ACH. Uh, typically, there's a premium fee for that, that's something I get waived if you ever have that come up. Uh, the standard would be processed on Monday by four for a Wednesday check day.
Uh, my second question is, uh, our council, we don't have timesheets.
Okay.
Our, our town council doesn't.
Gotcha. So on those, like, so for people that are not hourly, you'll be able to input their pay? And if it's the same every time, like their salary? Then you don't have to do anything to it, uh, it'll automatically pay unless you override it.
Because we get, we get paid once a month and the...
Oh.
So...
Gotcha. Is that paid the same every month?
Yeah.
So what would happen is, uh, on yours, so we can do it two ways. We set up two pay groups, you can have a monthly pay group and a weekly. Uh, so that way, that monthly only comes up, um, during, you know, whatever that pay period is.
Mm-hmm.
Or, uh, they could be, you know, they'll be on each weekly payroll and either, two things, you can either trigger their salary by punching it in when they do get paid or on the weeks that they don't get paid, there's a little box right by their name that says block. You can just hit the block each week until it's their time to pay. So just depending on which form that you wanna use.
Okay.
The only problem with pay group, if you do a separate pay group, then that base fee that you see out there, you're gonna have that, there's when that pay group monthly runs, you're gonna have an additional base. So in, in order to save dollars, I would do the option in which either trigger it via putting the dollar amount in their pay grid or hitting the X on the block, uh, for the weeks that they don't get paid. Just put a little X in that box, you, uh, you know, whichever way would be easiest for you.
Okay, thank you. You've answered the question.
Or separate, not base fee or anything.
Uh, Rod, I have a question.
Yes, sure.
Would it be possible for them to not do us once a month or whatever, but just go ahead and put us in that weekly thing with the employees and then just break our pay down? For the month?
Yes, so let's say, yeah, you gotta just divide it by, like, you know, multiply it by fifty-two, divide it, uh, and, or divide, do your annual, divide it by fifty-two, we sure could.
Okay, so that's an option too then?
Yes, yes. And then if you have deductions coming out, like insurance, 401K, other type deductions, we load those in so they happen every time unless you kill the system otherwise.
And so does our, uh, office employee call you guys or email you guys the hourly, uh, time that the employees have? Or how... Tell me how that works.
So what would happen is you would have to have a payroll person assigned from your side that would do the input. Uh, and if, if you're doing it online, you would input it there online, hit submit. If we're doing it for you, we would only talk to one point of contact. So all the employees gather their hours, whoever the administrator is, they get it to them and then we, if we're keying it, then that, well, that we, we would call them our payroll contact on your side. That's who we would deal with. They would tell us each person or they could email it to us and we could enter it or we could do it over the phone. But if you're doing it online, then whoever the administrator is on your side would actually enter those hours into the system.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's if you, you know, if you're utilizing your own type spreadsheets, things like that, you know, if you decided, you know, that, hey, I'd like to have an electronic timekeeping system that they clock in and out on, that integrates with payroll, then we have that option too. There's a monthly fee for that, but we do have that option.
Okay.
But you still have to have somewhere on your side that we consider as your payroll contact that we're, we're gonna communicate with. Uh, so that'll be our point of contact on our end.
Okay, all righty.
And the system's very user-friendly. It's, uh, you'd have access to employee maintenance, reports and payroll entry. It's three tabs that they would go to. And like I said, it's very user-friendly. Our payroll specialist will train you how to use it. Uh, I know how to use it too, so I can always do the training as well. It's just that they could see you like a, um, shadow, whereas I can't, I would just have to remotely tell you. But, uh, the payroll specialists are really good with the training and then going through the product, making sure you understand it. Um, if you were to move forward, you go through our implementation team. They set everything up, do the training, they do the first several payrolls with you until you feel comfortable. Uh, then you get assigned to your payroll, permanent payroll team or specialist and then that's who you'll call with any questions, how to's if you're in payroll. Uh, I'm always a point of contact, so anything that you need that, you know, if your specialist is unavailable or if you hold him, or if you just need a quick answer and you call me, I'm, you'll have my cell phone. So that's, like I said, I'm always a part of that as well.
I've got a question, how much time to enter this information on our end?
How long, you said, how long does it take, time was to enter?
Yes.
Okay, uh, as far as the setup or you're talking about to enter a payroll?
For us to enter our payroll.
Oh, let's see, you've got, um, roughly about fourteen people, right?
Yes.
I would say, once you're familiar with the system, well, let me ask you this, you're entering hours. What other type entries are going with, when you submit payroll? Are there any conditions or anything like that, or is it strictly hours?
Just hours.
Just hours.
To enter, if I was to enter a fourteen-man payroll, just hours, I'd probably could do it in about a minute, minute and a half at the most. It's very, because you'll have a grid. Everybody who's been hourly or the hourly people, you gotta have a call, it says regular, then overtime, and then if they have vacation sick, things like that, you'll have those options too. But on a standard week, where it's just regular, you're gonna go down and just however fast you can keep fourteen people's hours, it's that, it's that quick, it's, it's, it's very simple.
Once you set up the employees, they'll be there and you just literally go in and just...
Yeah. I mean, we still gotta go through the timesheets. I've got to go through the timesheets and verify the hours and sign them. Right now, it's, takes Sherry probably about twenty minutes to do the payroll, right?
Okay.
So I mean, I...
From start to finish.
Yeah. I mean, but I've still got, that's not counting me going through the timesheets and signing them. I don't see much benefit to this, to be honest with you.
It depends on if you need to automate the timesheets. You're going through the timesheets manually now. Are they manual timesheets that you're having to head up?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so where, where we would save you there is if you have the, uh, electronic timesheets to where they're clocking it, automatically adds it up automatically. All you then do is hit the button that says send a payroll and it's pushing those hours in payroll. Now you're not keying anything. All you're doing is getting submit and, and at that point, it's processing. So you're, when I say a minute and a half, that's me keying it without, and you're saying twenty minutes, now you're really still at a, uh, just a couple of minutes. Only thing that would be manual on your person's end would be if somebody, uh, called in sick and they had going to put eight hours in sick for them that day. Uh, but that's not at the end of the pay group, that's that day when they, you know, might call in sick. Uh, outside of that, it's just making sure there's no warnings on the, um, the dashboard for a missed punch, like somebody forgot to clock in or out, that they would have to edit. But as long as, you know, that's pretty clean, then it's just a matter of hitting the button and hit process. So, uh, there is no calculation.
And the base fee, is it every month too or is it just one time?
No, that's, that's per payroll.
So it's, uh, so the thing, the base fee...
Fifty-eight dollars a week is what it would be.
Yeah, fifty-eight dollars a week.
Yeah.
Not the base fee, I'm sorry, the total, fifty-eight dollars a week.
So that's gonna be two hundred and thirty-two dollars a month if you pick four weeks in a month.
I don't have any further questions.
And I'll see if there's anything else we can do on that base fee. There might be a little bit of wiggle room, but that, so that base fee is each time, then the two dollars is per person that's paid. So if you have, you know, your standard employees that week, but your, uh, the month, let's say you didn't do the monthly every time, then you would always be billed for the people paid that week. If you did divide the monthly's out by fifty-two, then of course it'd be all, all employees that were paid on that particular pay period that should get billed for it. And that does include, like I said, the quarterly returns, the annual returns, uh, uh, and the tax deposits as well.
I think the one, the, the thing in my mind, the reason that I brought it to you guys is, is I know with staffing changes, um, I, that's the reason I felt like it might be a good fit, um, as you're getting new people on board and, I mean, are they gonna be familiar with payroll and, and, you know, and the, the legal piece of that, you know? So that's, that's the area that I feel like, uh, we bring a lot to the table. But you need to decide if it's the right thing for the town, obviously, based on...
Yeah, that's definitely a good thought.
And I thank you, Pam, for bringing that to us.
Okay.
And been here and having the representative explaining exactly what you need to do.
Okay. And Rod's phone number is on the bat, on the bottom of that flyer and his email. So if you guys think of any other questions...
Okay.
Uh, or anything that comes up, um, be sure and reach out and, um...
Okay, thank you, Pam. Yes, sir. How much time do you spend filing tax papers for your, you know, the reporter, the reports and things like that? We'll look into it for you, man. I couldn't give you a definite answer right now.
All right, well, I appreciate y'all's time.
Yeah, thank you, Pam.
I'm gonna get back to work. So have a good day.
You too.
All right. Thank you, guys.
All right, have a good one, Pam. Next up was, uh, Mr. Schlauber, he's not here. So we can move on to the downtown Wi-Fi project update. That'll be Alderman Johnson.
And, uh, like I said, I haven't got any further information from about the downtown Wi-Fi project.
Okay. All right. All right, and next up, uh, was town benches homeless issue?
Yeah, somebody brought it to us, I think it was, is it addressed last meeting?
Uh, somebody had warned on, a citizen had warned on the general, but they didn't show up.
Okay. So, uh, we would have to set up, uh, update our ordinance or add one, because...
Updated, because it just, loitering is just for drugs.
Yeah.
So you would keep what you had and it, shoot, and admit, um... I think it's chapter nine.
Yeah, chapter nine, disorderly conduct of public nuisances.
I think we definitely need to update our ordinance. Be no overnight sleeping. And the bad thing about it is too, is whenever our, our maintenance guys are out there working, they're, they're having to deal with the needles that are in the trash cans next to these benches. And, uh, we need to make it safe for the maintenance men and keep it cleaned up so that whenever people do go by and see it, it's not just a mess all the time, sleeping bag. And I, I think we definitely need to change the ordinance to no overnight sleeping on the benches, for sure.
Okay, what concerns me, there's a similar case that came out of the city of Boise, Idaho, and a gentleman was sleeping on the bench and he was arrested for that. And the court's ruled that their ordinance violated his Eighth Amendment rights. And the test they're looking at is whether, um, there's bed space at the homeless shelter. And if there's no bed space at the homeless shelter, they can enforce that ordinance, but we don't have a homeless shelter.
Yeah, I think...
And we may wanna consider just taking the benches up with him, force it and stuff, and that way it's, uh...
There's a, another case, um, from the Ninth Circuit. And I brought that with me, um, that talks about, um... It's the homeless specifically.
Yeah.
But you're talking about no one sleeping on benches at night, you know, Lord.
This was ruled on by the Ninth Circuit in two thousand nineteen, Alan.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying it hadn't come to our circuit.
Right, yeah.
So it's not mandatory here.
Right, but the Supreme Court didn't hear it.
Whether our circuit would uphold it, the Ninth Circuit didn't because, um, of the lack of availability for shelter, um, for the homeless. But you still can't have homeless, um, blocking the use of a municipal item. So it's public property. So if you carefully word it, um, you still can't have a nuisance. Just saying, um, how you say it's very important. If, in other words, if you have these public benches and if they're loitering on them, if people are loitering on them all day and dumping syringes and clothing and making them unavailable to the municipality, people of the municipality, that's not, um... That, that's an issue that the municipality can control. But just to carte blanche say, um, no sleeping, um, that's what the Ninth Circuit was saying. Whether we would follow it in our circuit, we're the Fourth Circuit. We always say the Ninth Circuit takes a while to get out here. But I think you can carefully word it if it's an issue for pub... Everyone has a right to the benches. And you can control loitering at night if it's creating a public nuisance.
Do we have to make a motion for you to, to start getting that changed, Alan?
No, I, I can work on it. I'd like to work with a board member, um... To read over the menu and then, uh, memos. I'm hungry for lunch. I'd like to work with a board member. Or have a contact board member as, um, and just carefully adopt this. North Carolina does have, um, ordering statutes and public nuisance statutes. We have one, but it only addresses drugs. Well, and alcohol. Intoxication. And noise nuisance. So... And is it an issue for the town?
And we've had some complaints about a individual basically sleeping and bedding down on the benches, both through the daytime and at night and all hours, every day of the week.
So it's just that one individual that...
That's, as far as I know, that's the one, only one. So...
Yeah, and that's the other thing. Can you talk to that individual to make the bench available during the day? To the public? Do we not have any...
A lot of towns, there's so much stuff around.
I mean, she has like her clothes and blankets and everything underneath the benches.
Do we have anyone that takes into homes?
Not, 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 not in our county, no. I think Swain and Cherokee County might have a homeless shelter.
We do have home, and all of the churches and everything support it. I mean, you need, they couldn't do it on their own.
Exactly.
So, but it's available and they can go. If you have something like that, that may be where you need to work on first, is there something available? And then you can control all the nuisance you want to, and loitering and...
Well, I'll make a motion that we leave this table and, uh, get some more information on it before, before we act on it.
Yeah, let's look at what's potentially available.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a note.
I'll thank you.
So you're gonna table that?
Yeah.
All right. Next up, we've got the Old Town Hall property resolution. Hey, why don't you go ahead and address the board on that?
Well, I sent a memo. There are four ways. This is the one where we gotta, the board has to hunker down and make, uh, a number of decisions. And I think at our last board meeting, we talked about whether we were gonna have a praiser there or a real estate agent or someone to help you with, um, the value of the building. But before you do anything, you gotta decide how you're gonna sell it. So in order for me to prepare a resolution for you to adopt, um, if you're gonna do it by an advertisement for sealed bids... if you're gonna do a negotiated offer, or if you're gonna do it at a public auction. If you advertise for sealed bids, I mean, there's procedures for all that, you don't, but in order to adopt the resolution, you have to have that first and you have to show that, um, put in the resolution how you're selling the property, by sealed bids, by negotiated offer, by public auction. I threw in exchange, but I didn't explain that. That would be exchanging with the public, uh, yeah, so, okay. Are you gonna set a minimum price? The twenty twenty-two tax value of that building is thirty-six thousand three forty. And I attached the tax bill.
Yeah.
And so you, you, are you going to, that has to be part of the resolution, whether you're just putting it up for sale or whether you have a minimum bid. And you have to have in the resolution the basis for the price. And I, I don't know that the thirty-six three forty, is that an accurate assessment? And I think one of, one board member said taking someone there that for an evaluation of the building. Quite often, a, a building will be falling down, the tax value, and it's still fifty thousand dollars, cause no one's been able to look at it. So, um, if you have a tax value of that and you sell it for ten thousand, the municipality needs gets in trouble for not having a basis for the sale price. So, um, so you first have to decide how to sell it, how you're gonna sell it. What is your basis? And you have to have information. And then the third thing is, you have to have stated with specificity why you don't need that building. Towns are held to a higher standard. If you have a piece of property you're selling and you're not needing it from the public, why? So you have to, you can sell it, but you have to state, it, it has to be more than you don't need it anymore. So all that has to go in the resolution. Then that gets published and that, a portion of it gets published in the Grams Star. And keeping in mind, if you take it by offer, when an offer comes in, you never, never disclose the person's name. If you turn around and have to publish again in the star that the town has an offer for X dollars, or is it thirty thousand dollars? But you never put the person's name in there, but that's required by law and you have to wait ten days. And if no upset bid comes in, then that person gives.
So if we did the sealed bids and it wouldn't?
The sealed bids, you reserve the right to not accept any of them. So, but the sealed bids, that's how you take care of any low-bought prices, is that you don't always reserve the right not to accept any of them. On taking an offer and you publish the amount of the offer, but you still have to do the resolution first. So really, the work ahead, the work ahead of us is to do the resolution is the reasons. Specify the reasons a town no longer needs a property. And I gave some examples about town purposes, too small, the condition of the building, et cetera. So that's in that first paragraph.
Yeah.
Then decide how you're gonna sell it. And decide on the price. And then the advertising. Whether you take advertised for sealed bids, you still have to publish.
Yeah.
And I think you need to keep that in mind. Publish, publishing isn't cheap. And, uh, and you may have to keep on publishing. So you wanna cover your calls. And more than anything, you need a price on that building about the value of it, because you have to have a basis for why you're, for the price. And that's it.
So we got a little bit of work to do.
And if you're ready, I mean, if you're ready to give me all this information today, we've put the resolution on the next meeting, but, um, if you break down that memo, you might still have some work in order to determine the basis of the price.
Now, I'm in favor of the rest of it, just, uh, getting the actual price for the property.
Yeah, and the rest of it, I think we can.
Yeah.
The only way you do exchange is, I, I wouldn't even, that's not an issue, unless the county.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause I think they have exchanged property or something
Yeah.
in the past, but. All right, thank you, Alan. Looks like we got a little bit of work to do.
So you wanna hold off?
So, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to, to, I'm just talking now as a concerned citizen that's been living here for six and a half years. On Main Street, just three doors up from the town hall. And that building has been sitting vacant for six and a half years as long as I've been here. I don't know how long it was vacant before that.
Wow.
I have heard, uh, Mayor Adams talk a number of times about how poor our city is and how poor we are. And, and so I would think that anything, uh, any income that would come in would benefit the town. The building isn't being used. Uh, from, you know, uh, great and revved up work to bring a tenant in because any vacant buildings here, that goes against everything that we're trying to do. We're trying to bring businesses back to Main Street. So the vacant buildings that sit here do nothing but hurt us. There was a tenant that was gonna come in and there was a long-term lease being negotiated. They ended up backing away because the cost of repairs to the building was too big. Now, I don't know if this is true or not. I heard that there was another business that talked about purchasing the building and that I was told that, that they found out that the foundation needed about forty thousand dollars to repair it and they lost interest. My point is, I guess, that anything that can be done to get the building occupied and repaired is gonna be a plus. Because of the, the, the history of the buildings on Main Street has been, if they sit there vacant, then they end up getting torn down because they fall into so much disrepair that they can't be saved. So to me, I don't care how you do it, what process you do. But to me, I would think that the town would not want that sitting on their books as a liability to them. And that you could benefit from the income that you would get from moving out. That's, that's, I guess that's primarily my, my concern of it. The other, the other thing is, you know, it, it seems to me that a lot of stuff gets drawn out, you know? When, when, when we approached, we asked, well, what do we need to do? And we said, we, we were told that we needed to bring in an offer to purchase. And we did that. And now, now we find out, well, we've, we've got a lot, a lot longer process to go through. So, and, and I, and I understand that. Now, I'm not, I'm not faulting anybody for that. Just, uh, would like to see, you know, would like to see this process not be something that's gonna stretch out for another six or eight months. So that, that's all I have to say on that.
All right.
But it looks like, uh, we have, uh, just a little bit more work we gotta do that's, she sent this out a little bit before our meeting, I don't know. A couple, a week ago or something, a couple weeks ago. And, uh, it looks like we gotta get it appraised, it looks like, so we can get a price on the property, because I don't think the tax value is accurate itself. That's, that's me. So that's, and then hopefully we can get that.
Soon as you have a basis.
Yeah.
For the price, you'll be good.
Then we can draw up a resolution and present it next, next month. And then.
It may take you a lot longer to get an appraisal than you think.
Yeah.
What I understand now, appraisals are like, they're all backed up.
They are.
Yep.
Everywhere. Not just here, I mean, it's everywhere.
Yep.
But, uh, like I said, that's, that's the process and we will try to get it done as rapid as we can.
All right, anything further on that? All right, any further on business? All right. Moving on to new business, I don't really have an update today and Mr. Jenkins is not here. So we'll move on to number three. And that's, that's you, John. You've got a mural proposal?
Actually, that's not really what we were here for. Uh, what we're here to talk about was the.
Allocation?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's on here too.
Okay. We do have another, we do have another mural that's been, uh, submitted for us that's at much lower cost with our, our building over here, but we haven't had approval from the property owner yet, so.
Okay, and the twenty-five hundred dollar request is allocation I would give to RevDUP every, every year for the last.
Two, two years.
Last two years.
Yeah, and there was some concern because of records weren't found. We, we went back and traced and what happened was the town approved us having this, uh, twenty-five hundred dollar donation for our operating expenses in, um, June, June of twenty twenty, but they said, we wanna wait until the fiscal year, the next fiscal year, which would have been July. Then, uh, in July, they approved that donation. But then that was the year that COVID was bad, and so it was postponed for like eight months. So we never got that donation until February of twenty twenty-one. And then when, when, um, in, and later in twenty twenty-one, we had to pay for some advertising for the Christmas decoration contest. And we requested that that funding come to us for that twenty twenty-one year, come to us quicker. And so we got, that donation was made, um, December twenty-second. And so whatever, whatever, I, I, I think the town approved that this is an annual donation to the operating expenses for RevDUP. And so we just, you know, again, we have to pay for advertising for the Christmas fund here. And, uh, I think that RevDUP has brought a lot to the table with the town. We, we worked with Gray and, and Carl Gillespie and, and Kevin Corbin to get one point one eight million dollars approved to repair the Main Street. You know, we've started a program, a RUBA that is geared just to help promote local businesses, which is something that we desperately need, and that's been a, a real success so far. We provide a lunch and a, and a, a business, uh, seminar every month for the local businesses. Uh, you know, we've got the Christmas decoration, uh, contest, which has been a big success. We, you know, we've just done over and over. We, the Millsap mural, we helped secure that. So I think that we, our value is there and, uh, we, you know, we just wanna continue that relationship with the town. The town has always supported us. And that's it.
At this time, I'll make a motion to, uh, give RevDUP their allocated funds, twenty-five hundred dollars.
I'll take it.
All right, next up on the agenda. Got some quotes. We need a new copier. And I've got some quotes for that one. Can be in your packet. First one is for.
Oh, there's two different kinds?
Yeah.
Do we have funds to purchase this? No? The paper notice that you wanna translate that.
Really, there's a main difference between this, sure, one could fax and the other one.
One, one has a fax, that's correct. Yeah, there's only difference in the two.
I think if we get one, we need to have it all, all together. And then we can eliminate counter space, cause we got a fax machine that's set aside, but I don't think it works.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't even have a fax machine.
Right.
But now, pretty much everything's done by email or stuff like that.
Fax is kind of.
So it may not be a big deal to have a fax. There's still some places that still require a fax document.
Yeah.
Uh, that would come out of office expenditures?
Yeah, probably.
Well, uh, I'll make a motion, we approve this. Is there any other company out there that, like, maybe somebody the county uses that could give us another quote so we'd have three?
I think they use the same company. We could check and.
I mean, I ain't, I ain't opposed to getting one, but just to be on the legal side, we need at least three quotes.
Yeah, unless you've made a good faith effort.
Yeah.
If you've made a good faith effort.
See, I mean, here's two different quotes, but it's, uh, from the same company. And I don't know who the county uses. Not been able to reach out.
I'm pretty sure they use the same company, but we can, we can find somebody else.
I mean, at least we have a, one more quote, I think will be good. But I'm not opposed to getting another copier. Cause that has been there since, oh, several, several years.
So you want to table that the next meeting?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
In, uh, in search of a, another quote or two.
Okay.
That's equal to what we got.
Yeah.
With a fax.
Okay. All right. Next up is, uh, number five, budget item, employee holiday bonus.
Yeah, it was in the budget and, uh, uh, and, uh, there's some minute, uh, meeting minutes here that is paid out the week of Thanksgiving, and I believe it was not brought up at the Thanksgiving meeting. But we went ahead and, uh, give that to our employees. We just need to, cause it's already in the budget, so we just need to make it, make a motion to approve it at this time. Debbie?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, employee holiday bonus.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, next up, uh,
Number nine.
Nine, the wrestling team.
And this, I mean, when I was here to meet me two months ago, we didn't have no PR relation, uh, PR money. And, uh, in the past, we just pulled it out of the mayor's expenses. But, uh, it's up to, well, he'd have to be willing to forthcoming the funds to donate to the, until we can get a PR line item.
Yeah, I may need that for future use at this moment.
Debbie?
Yes, I agree with you, Brian. I think we do need that to be a line item because we've got a lot of public promotions that we need to, uh, get out there to loan and help.
Yeah, and I don't think we got anything in our, uh, like for public relations or anything like that, in a line item. And we need, do need one, so hopefully we'll get it in our next budget and we'll be able to help some of these people out for, at a PR standpoint.
All right, number ten, um.
Is the, uh, source water residency and response plan certification form, Chad?
We have one in place. Once it's in place, we just need to bring that and have, uh, everybody sign off of whoever needs to sign. That way, you know, we've got proof and we're doing what the state requires.
I'll make a motion to approve the certification form and give the mayor authority to sign on behalf of town or officer.
And, uh, keep, Mr. Keith Bus here to say, too, so I can give that back to him if he needs it.
Did Debbie second?
Debbie, you.
She seconded it?
Oh, she did, okay.
Okay. All right.
So you'll need to. Fill that.
Yeah, I got it. Next up, number eleven, and Debbie, would that add to the agenda about? Next up, number 11, and Debbie, would that add to the agenda about what you're gonna-
The dog issue.
Yeah.
And that would actually fall under nuisance, wouldn't it? Uh, I think, or maybe we can just address the homeowners directly?
It's, the residents were having issues inside the city limits or outside?
Both. There's, I mean, some in and some out. And there's been times where some of the guys, they have to actually fight the dogs off to get back to the vehicle. I mean, they're pretty vicious. I've had, it's been a few years ago, but I had a time where a bulldog attacked me and I had to beat it off. I mean, it, it was, it could be really bad and we've talked about getting like mace or something, pazer or something. I don't know what we can do, but you know, hopefully it will, it will, you know, doesn't come through that, but something needs to be done.
I would probably-
Go to the magistrate for a vicious dog? Now, there's criminal laws for that. I mean, if you wanna give them a warning for us-
Yeah, I would say we issue them a letter from the town state, you know, we, you know, your dog were unable to read your meter or your dog opposes a threat while we're reading the meter or something like that. And we'll have to pursue other avenues if this continues.
But the only way they can do anything is if something happens. So when, I mean, I propose that we say, you know, if we can't read the meter, then maybe we'll just have to bill, and I don't know if it's even possible, bill a high bill or something, because I mean-
Is there something that we can add on to the water bills addressing that to all the customers just in general?
I mean, as far as laws, I mean, they can't do anything until they're broken anyway. So I mean, a vicious dog is just a vicious dog until it attacks somebody. So I mean, it's kind of-
I would just put something on the next water bill and just stating, you know, that we've had some issues with, you know, the dog being aggressive towards our maintenance employees. You know, and we're gonna have to go other avenues if it isn't corrected. I think that would-
Yeah.
At least that's the first route. That way you're gonna get everybody. And then if it continues, maintenance needs to bring a list of the residents that is in question with the-
The hog attacks.
Yeah. Vicious dogs.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, we'll go with this route and then, and then if, you know, it continues, then we'll have to see other avenues.
Madam Attorney, do you have anything to add to that?
I'd like to see, I, I think it's serious where you've got a vicious dog that's attacking public employees. And, you know, one time and then proceed with the magistrate, so things.
Okay. Anything further with this matter?
I don't think so.
Now we go, we're doing closed session for personnel and-
I need to talk about it.
Yeah.
So if you wanted-
One and two. So. We want to have a closed session. Yeah. Motion closed session preservation attorney client privilege pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A 3 and 143-311, 31811C. I move that the town or official counsel go into closed session to receive advice or email and advise attorney, town or official counsel. Which advice comes per view attorney client privilege? Advice will be general legal advice about legal issues and legal matters and personnel motion pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143-31811C. I move that the town or official counsel go into closed session purpose considering personal matters as defined in and allowed by North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A 6 and North Carolina General Statute 160A and 168.
I just want to thank everybody for-
Thank you.
And she'll, she'll give you a call whenever it's ready. Okay, no problem. Y'all, appreciate it.
Debbie, thinking on that?
Yeah.
Okay.